Thank you everyone for coming. I think it is great. We're going to have to start finding a different place to hold our board meetings. The first thing that I want to tell you is that this meeting is being video recorded. We have a number of rules in our meeting bylaw that govern how that's to happen. Essentially, the public is not to be recorded. So it's over here. The other thing that I would like to tell you is that Alan is away today. He's probably vasking somewhere in England. However, we do have a forum, so we'll go ahead with the meeting today. The first order of business is adoption of the agenda. So the board has the agenda in front of them. Are there any additions or changes that you'd like to make? Okay. And I have a motion then to approve the agenda as presented. Glenn, the seconded? I'll make that up. All in favor? Okay, so you have, we have three sets of minutes for approval today. The first set of minutes are from the March 16th meeting. Are there any errors or omissions? And if not, a motion to accept. It says March 16th, but on the actual meeting minutes it says 17th.
I just noticed that, I apologize. It was actually March 16th.
It was 16th, okay. Other than that, nothing. Any other errors or omissions? And I have a motion then to accept the minutes of March 16th as amended. I'll make that motion. And Peter? All in favor? Good. The next set of minutes that you have is from the committee of the whole meeting that the previous board held with the auditors prior to the annual general meeting. And the purpose of that meeting was to go through the audited financial statements. And I have a motion to accept those minutes. Peter? Seconded? All seconded, yes. All in favor? Good, thank you. And the third set of minutes are the inaugural meeting from April the 13th. If there are no errors or omissions, a motion to accept this set of minutes. All in favor? Okay, all in favor? Okay. The next item is business arising. And you have in your, well, it's kind of a combination of business arising and correspondence. In February, the board made the motion to write to the various ministries requesting that they reconsider a policy that they have that prevents improvement districts from applying for a number of different funding programs. The health minister was copied on that letter. And in your correspondence, you now have a reply from the health ministry basically saying they have no money. So just for file and reporting, we still have not heard from a ministry that actually makes the decisions about the policy change. Maybe ask Kevin if you would follow up and find out where that is. Okay, so that leads us to reports. And Kevin, you're first.
So thank you. I have a number of items to report on this month. Firstly, as always, the May water toll invoices were mailed out May the 5th with a due date of Thursday, June the 2nd. As always, please ensure you make your payments, arrange to make your payments either by traditional mail, through online banking, in person or in cash, or sign up for our automatic direct payment withdrawal service prior to the due date in order to avoid the 10% late penalty, payment penalties that would apply. Secondly, I've now completed another comprehensive review of our parcel tax arrears and included a report of my findings in this month's board meeting package for the trustees' review and consideration. In summary, we currently have 37 landowners or five and one-quarter percent of our 700 total parcel tax accounts that contain arrears greater than one year old or in excess of $450. The breakdown I've provided to the board at this fall was we have 311 accounts which are essentially current, so those are landowners that have just their second half installment remaining. That total is just under $60,000 of our current parcel tax arrears. So those are in good standing until September 1st deadline comes across. We have eight accounts that owe between $401 and $700. That's $4,300 in arrears. Those I'm not too concerned about, we will follow up with traditional collection letters on those, as we will with the ones that are 700 to 1,000 with a bit more firmer stance on that because we have nine accounts to the total of $6,800 in that position. The ones of most concern are the next two categories, being anybody that's 1,000 to 2,000 in arrears with 18 accounts unfortunately that are in that position, which totals $25,500. Very significant amount. And we even have two accounts that are over 2,000, so that's accounts that have not paid in several years. And there's just under $5,000 on that. So I have prepared collection letters to be issued later this week to those 37 overdue landowners, and I am recommending today that 20 accounts with the most outstanding arrears be brought to the attention of the local government branch of the B.C. Ministry of Community Sport and Culture Development as a subsequent collection measure in these latest, if our latest letters prove unsuccessful. So as I've reported previously to the past board, and I'll just refresh the current board, is that once we feel we've exhausted our typical collection steps would be ongoing collection letters, we can request that the ministry write letters on our behalf to those landowners to try to encourage those arrears to be brought into good standing. If that doesn't work, then I would further recommend that those same accounts be earmarked for a possible tax sale if again they remain in arrears immediately after the Thursday, September 1st due date for the 2016 parcel taxes. I will be however keeping the board up to date on progress in this regard. Thirdly, with respect to the ongoing collection of water tolls, I must advise the board that a single 24-hour water service disconnection notice was issued last Tuesday, May the 10th as a result of significant water tolls remaining outstanding on that account, and also as a result of a sizable unattended water leak emanating from that property that was beginning to impact neighboring properties. For whatever reason, it's a rental property, there was water emanating from what appeared to be a break within the property, and it was starting to start trickling down towards neighbors' basements and whatnot. So that coupled with the arrears left us no choice. This service was subsequently turned off the early morning of May 12th, and as of today, we still have no contact with the landowner or the tenants. We've tried to get ahold of them to no avail. So we've attempted several times. So the water will remain off until we hear something back from the landlord. And the disconnect and reconnect charges, which is a $50 each, have already been applied to their accounts and the account's been turned off. Also to bring everybody's attention, effective Friday, May the 13th, the last Friday, the coastal fire management branch issued a category two open fire ban for most areas within the jurisdiction, within their jurisdiction, including Union Bay. This prohibition applies to all backyard burning of debris piles smaller than two meters high by three meters wide, but does not ban campfires that are half meter by a half meter or smaller. As always, we recommend that landowners refer directly to the B.C. Wildfire Management Branch's website at BCWildfire.ca in order to familiarize themselves with the latest information and restrictions, specifically with the new fines now applicable under the B.C. Wildfire Act rather. The fines have changed recently and they're much steeper than they have been in the past. We've also included links to this key information in the notices on our homepage of our website, which of course is www.union-a.ca. And lastly, I attended the Coastal Water Suppliers Association Annual Conference, AGM, in Manimal on April the 8th. A number of topics were covered by the speakers brought in for this event, and some of those include what was learned from the 2015 drought, a regional approach to conservation and water restriction communications throughout the regional district of Manimal, which proved somewhat informative, a review of the environmental officer's certification programs, new definitions for water treatment and distribution. There was a presentation on the roles and responsibilities of improvement district board of trustees and administrators by the local government branch of the Ministry of Community Sport and Culture Development. There was also a presentation by the North Salt Spring Water Works on the water management challenges they continue to experience in Salt Spring Island. There was an overview by Rosemary Smart from the Havensburg Water Works District on the ongoing efforts being made with respect to opening direct access to senior government capital grant funding to improvement districts, and that's very much still in its infancy but ongoing. And lastly, a perspective from law of the regional district of Manimal on meter teeters, illegal connections, and water theft. So in addition to some good information coming out of the above presentations, I also participated on that day in a demonstration of Vatten's software iCity utility billing program, which is being considered by, I believe now up to a dozen improvement and or waterworks districts on Vancouver Island as a potential replacement. Somebody's naming on the lights.
I thought it had a good word.
Thought it was something for stroke or something. Where was I? Oh, yes. So as a potential replacement for our existing white water, right water, water toll and parcel tax account management and billing systems and our accounting software, which is Sage 50. Discussions are underway with Vatten. In fact, I just received a questionnaire from them today. So let's determine if this is a cost-effective and yet robust solution that we can put together to meet the needs of our districts going forward. So I'll report, be reporting back to the board on that as things progress. And that does conclude my report for me.
Any questions or comments for Kevin?
I've got a question. The people who have the water leak, have the water leak that you've turned off your water, tried to contact with, do you send them a letter too?
We post a notice, 24-hour notice gets posted to the door of the residence because we have to post that in person. I've also tried to email the owner several times. I've even tried to phone him, and I get a message I've never heard before, something about it not being initialized. So his phone isn't even on.
But, so a notice has been put on his door?
Oh, notice, 24-hour notice was posted directly to the door. That's how 24-hour notices get issued. We have to, had to deliver them in person.
And what about a letter being sent too?
I've tried contacting him by letter too. I get no response.
You don't need to send a letter? I'm just thinking of proof that, you know, that you've been there.
Again, it was sent by email, it was posted to the door, I've sent subsequent notices.
And that's all we need. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? The only thing that I would like to add is that the right water system that we have been using for a long time, and many improvement districts use it for billing, is not the greatest system.
Yes.
And we've certainly had all kinds of issues with it. So it'll be interesting to see if this will be a better replacement.
It's gotta be something we can afford because this system is used by almost larger local governments as well, but we're hopeful that through a co-purchasing process, we can get something that would be possible. We'll see.
Now, because we don't have a finance and capital planning committee, oh, do you want to do your finance first or separate?
If you want to do them at the same time, that's fine.
Might as well do that instead. Kevin will be reporting to the board on the state finances, so you've all received your financial report and all of your parcel tax summaries and that kind of stuff. So Kevin?
Okay. So the board was previously distributed a copy of the budget versus actual comparative statement to the end of April. So just for the board's highlight, you know, now that we're roughly a third of the way into the year, we're seeing everything kind of falling according to plan. This statement represents two of our bi-monthly billings for the year. We just would have done a third one first thing into May, so that'd get reflected on the next month's statement. But to date, we're right on track to meet our revenue projections, if not exceed them a little bit. On the, sorry, the expenditure side, everything is falling well within line, most things are as expected. The only one that was slightly above budgeted expectations was the audit and accounting, and that was largely because we have been continuing to try to clean up some opening balance issues from previous years, and we feel we've got them late. So that probably will be the last of the extraordinary costs in that regard.
How long have you?
We've been working on it.
It's been a long time.
So other than that, everything is in line, and we're continuing to show the accrual for the capital contributions that would occur towards the end of the year. So I certainly haven't seen any, anything that's raised any concern for me at this stage, unless anybody has any questions.
See anybody having questions? No, no. No surprise? That's good. Okay. So can I have a motion then to accept Kevin's, Kevin's greater report and the financial report?
I'll make that motion.
Seconded? And seconded, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, now, because we don't have a fire committee per se, and the next item are a couple of staff reports, because two of them being from the fire department, just kind of summarize them and we'll file them for information. In March, there were three incidents, two of them were first responder and one for an investigation only, it was not a fire. And in April, there were seven incidents, six first responder, and one was a vehicle fire. We're down to 21 members on our volunteer fire department with the loss of two who left the province due to employment. Training is ongoing. The fire department participated in the Cromox Valley Youth Fire Camp, and three of the high schools in the valley sent 30 students to that. So it was a good opportunity to interact with some young people. The fire department had an occupational health and safety meeting, and nothing has come out of that. So I think that's pretty well it. And I have a motion to receive and file the fire chase.
What are the motion?
Seconded? All in favor? Thank you. And the other report is from the Public Works Department from Dan. Langley Lake is currently nine days ahead of last year at this time in terms of the level, and there are lots of new rillipads growing away out there. The log boom that we were having trouble with earlier in the year, work is currently being done on that, and there is a log boom of sort, no, log boom, at the log sort in Union Bay, and he's contacting the owner to see if they will donate it to us. Flushing occurred, but everything seems to be within normal range. So again, a motion to receive and file. Glenn? Seconded? Peter? All in favor?
Pardon me, Madam Chair. I wanted to bring, I guess, to the group's attention a couple of things. First and foremost, with respect to water treatment plant operator certification, so the Public Works Superintendent Dan McGill recently attended, I think it was a four-day training and all, to achieve his water treatment level one certification. And he passed with flying colors, about 95%, so I just wanted to make that point, congratulate him for that. One thing he didn't include in his report that I wanted to bring forward as well is Keith McKay also recently completed his recertification for confined space awareness.
Can you pass on congratulations from the board?
I will do so.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's the reports. So the next item is new business.
Excuse me, was there a motion to put some names forward for the Public Works Committee?
Yes, we're going to deal with that now under new business.
Okay.
We have a couple of issues to deal with regarding our two committees that we have, the Public Works Committee and the working group on the fire hall. So the first one is the Public Works Committee, and we need to appoint community volunteers. So Alan has talked to Glenn about proposing that, right?
Yes, he put a, asked me to put a motion forward for proposal for membership of the Public Works Committee, and he has some names here. The only one he wasn't sure of was Paul Allard. Are you on board?
Yes.
Okay, so the names he put, placed forward was Paul Allard, Bill Calcock, Tom Dirk.
Darren Niski.
Darren Niski. Okay, thank you. And Jim Elliott. So I think he put those, would he motion put those people forward?
Seconded?
Seconded, yes.
Any discussion at all? Okay, all in favor? Good, thank you. Welcome to those people that are here. The issue regarding the fire hall working group is that at the inaugural meeting, Anne was reappointed to that committee. It's a two-year term, so the membership on the committee does not change. But because we don't have a fire committee, this group will now report directly to the board, so we had to make an amendment to the terms of reference for that group. So in your package, you've got the terms of reference. The only thing that has changed in it is that this group now will report directly to the board as opposed to the Fire Services Committee. And I need a motion to approve the amended terms of reference.
Second motion?
Okay, Glenn? Any discussion? All in favor? It was in March that we revised the meeting procedure bylaw by adding a number of clauses regarding audio and video recording. As is required by the ministry, that bylaw was then sent to the ministry for their review and approval. They came back to us asking us to get a legal opinion specifically regarding the freedom of information and protection of privacy requirements. So in your package, you have correspondence from Peter Johnson at Staples, Dan Stewart. And as lawyers are wont to do, they do what you ask them, but then they also comment on a whole bunch of other stuff. So the upshot of the review that they did was that there are five points that they are making about the revisions. So the first one is that the board can make rules regarding audio and video recording so as not to disrupt meetings, that the recordings made by members of the audience does not involve collection of personal information, so therefore there is not an issue for you did. He thinks that the provisions that we put into the bylaw saying that we require people to indemnify the board if a problem arises is probably unenforceable. And that the provision where the board can request the individual making the recording to delete or destroy recordings is also probably unenforceable. And he's made a recommendation, and I'll read it out because I don't want to sound like this. If members of the public addressing the board are to have the right to request that they not be filmed or recorded, the bylaw should state so much more explicitly. And the chair should be given the explicit authority to direct that members of the public cease filming or recording in those circumstances. However, this raises the issue of whether it is reasonable to require a member of the public to state at a public meeting that they have a concern about recording, or to have the chair make that announcement. An alternative might be to prohibit any video recording of members of the public present at the meeting. So essentially, there are three potential changes to our bylaw that could come out of this if you want to do it. The two regarding unenforceable things that we have imposed on people regarding indemnifying the board and the meeting, if we suggest that. Although this bylaw was built on a whole pile of other bylaws, and they all have this clause in there, so, I mean, it's not really a legal issue. It could be left as is, recognizing that we probably wouldn't have much contact with the board. The other issue is about strengthening the wording around requesting that people not be recorded, and giving the chair more explicit authority. So, on it, I don't know what we'd like to do.
Maybe you can help me out here. This videotaping, is it for personal use or is it for the board?
No, it's not for the board. It's nothing to do with the board.
So as long as it's positive and it's for personal use and it's positive for the...
Not as long as it's positive. It is what it is.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I thought we already had written in the one in the bylaw that we prohibit the recording of members of the public present, let me, somewhere. Do we not?
Well, the bylaw says that, but the lawyer is saying that it needs to be stronger language and more explicit.
Okay. Well, I hope you can make it stronger than that.
If I may, so in light of this legal opinion, I did go back to the sections that he spoke to, and it was specifically sections 58 through 63, which is all those sections pertaining to audio/video recording. And I have made some suggestions or recommendations for wording changes in what he suggests. Not sure how you want to deal with that. If you would like me to then put this into a revised draft of the bylaw and have that brought to the next meeting, or would you like me to speak to that?
Probably it'd be better to see it in writing and then you can think about it, right? I prefer that.
Okay, so I will take steps to put this into a draft new bylaw, and then we can bring it forward in June for reapproval. And then, like I said, I've already mentioned to the ministry that from their initial concern with respect to the freedom of information and protection of privacy, that we have no issues from our legal opinion on that, so we were pleased to hear that. So I suggested to them that there would be a rewrite for it.
Okay, will you be emailing us what your draft is before the meeting?
Yes. It'll be part of the information package.
Okay. So our next scheduled meeting is June 25th. Just a reminder to the board that we've had to reschedule our semi-annual meeting with the CBRD, so you have a new proposed date. June 23rd? Yeah, June 23rd. And that concludes the meeting. So we'll open it to the board for questions. Mary?
Yes, regarding the people, the public. From the point I'm at here, I get these people's heads in, so I have no way of taking those out. So if they're on there, and like if somebody turns around and looks right at the camera, it's on there.
We will consider that.
And, you know, if there's somewhere else that I can put it where it just captures the five of you or the six when Alan's here, then that would be great, but there's no way around it now. There's going to be some people's, the backs of their heads.
With regard to the videotaping, my observation through videotaping is Mary is the only one that has been videotaping the meetings. To what, I think it's, how much are lawyer fees costing you did, or the taxpayers here, partial landowners, in having lawyers involved in trying to... in having lawyers involved in trying to accommodate Mary in her need to videotape these meetings?
This is not accommodating a single individual in the community. Anyone in the community that would like to videotape or record would be governed by the bylaw.
Have you ever had anyone from the community except Mary approach you requesting...